Well, we're going to warn you as soon as something happens. Well, look, the ditch will be cleaned up now. We've already spoken about this. We have to clean that up with the smallest trouble. Well, look, he was too busy. He was too busy, too much cold to contend with, too much snow. A lot of things are of a priority nature. Well, Mayor Dejavain, a lot of water has flown under the bridge. It's not a month or two that's going to make a difference, Mr. Le Bonde. No, it's never, never too late. Really, you know, it's always the matter of, you know, well, you know, we'll delay action another month and another month. Look, let's try. Look, do you have another crooked lawyer to sue me in court? Let's not go there. Yes, we will go there because that's where it's going. Let's finish discussions right now. I'm telling you, I'm telling you, Mr. Mayor, I want satisfaction. Do you know what you're doing right now? Look, the only thing, you know, the last time that I appeared before you, he said Louis has an engineer's plan, but he doesn't have an engineer's plan. It's not my business to give you an engineer's plan. He'll give you an engineer's plan. And we're working on this property because we have a right to go there. We have an easement there. Look, I spoke to the neighbor. Do you know how much trouble this easement will cause? And you don't know what kind of precedent you're creating when you're doing all these things. These are like crooked legal things that you're doing. And I went through that particular experience. It took me quite a lot, you know, Mr. Dejavain. They even stole money from my bank account, sir. Well, Mr. Le Bonde, that does concern me. Yeah, but it still stems from actions taken by the town of Rockland with Mayor Pierre-Pierre and then Richard Dejavain, who hid things that were done behind his back. It wasn't, first lady, Richard Dejavain was not involved. Well, who took his place afterwards? Look, that has nothing to do with your situation. The same system is now in place as it was in Mr. Dejavain's time. You know, I've been sent documents here and there with regards to studies, studies that are commissions, commissions that don't lead to anything. You have money to waste. Are you finished, sir? I want to fini-- I'm not finished. Well, just get it off your chest. I'm not here to get anything off my chest. I'm just asking you a question. Do you know how to dig a proper ditch? We haven't had time to go down and take a look at what needs to be done. Well, the shovel came up before the holiday period and then left. Look, I have nothing else to tell you. Just sit down. I have nothing else to tell you. Sir, Mayor Dejavain, you said that the shovel was going to come over and fix things up that morning. Yeah, well, he was going to do some work and level out the land on the property beside yours right now. Look, am I, are you going to let me talk? Listen to me, Mr. Mayor. You told me that this ditch was going to be filled up because there was a lot of water that was accumulated there. Or they're going to fill that up with gravel. You don't need gravel to fill that up there. Really, if you drain my daughter's well, everyone's going to become responsible. And I'm going to hold you all accountable for what's happening with my daughter's property right now. Are you finished? I just want to know, sir, when this will be done? When they have time to do so, it will be done. As things stand right now, priority goes to freezing pipes, cold and snow. And as soon as our employers can do something, they'll phone you up and they'll do something on your property. When is that? They'll let you know. Oh, two days before they set foot on my property. Listen, Mr., our plan will give you an answer. Well, as was represented to Mr. Le Bonde on many occasions in the past, we will respect the engineer's plans and the deadlines that were put forward with regard to the design that was planned concerning the ditch. The engineer was hired after the ditch was dug. When I had occasion to build that house, they dragged me in court. They sued me because I didn't have an engineer. They built, they dug a ditch without an engineer. Are you going to bring all of these people? Are going to sue all of these people in court? Or are all the taxpayers called upon to pay for all of this inequities? Mr. Le Bonde, the city of Clarence and Rockland has experts that can come up with ditch designs. And sometimes we hire people on a subcontractor's basis to do this type of work. Maybe initially, work was performed within our department, which was quite correct work that was done in keeping with standards that are promoted by the province. Now, the first ditch, in effect, well, the same rule applies, you see. And we're widening the existing ditch right now and will clean even more of that ditch than it has been cleaned in the past. The ditch was properly constructed. No, 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 it's not true. It's, let him finish. Yeah, but he's telling me that the ditch was properly done. It was not properly done. Sir, stop talking. He's talking right now. Listen to me, listen to me. No, I won't listen to you. Your three minutes are up, sir. Look, why is he telling lies like this? Sir, have a seat and have a seat. Have a seat, have a seat. Miss Kappo was right there and he was, he dug me. He treated me by all sorts of means. Have a seat. No, yes, no, yes. Why don't you listen to the taxpayer trying to speak to you? You're not the one paying the taxes. Your daughter is the one paying taxes. I'm representing my daughter. Let's just take a break here, folks. Let's just take a break. Let's just take a break. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be here all night long, sir. I don't care. I'll be back in 30 minutes. Mr. Le Bonde, your time is over and done with. You're going to leave. Well, phone the police officer. Phone the police. You've already phoned the police on me? Called the police on me? I've never done that, but I'll do it in your case, sir. Let me guarantee you this. I have the right to ask questions in a question period, and I need an answer. I told you, sir, that it's going to be done as quickly as possible with a shovel there. Mr. Leonard will call you when he's ready to do the work that needs to be done. Well, just go and take a look at, just contact Mr. Leonard. Well, he didn't contact, why would I bother contacting him? He knows where my daughter lives. That's why we pay taxes, to obtain services that are honest and transparent. You don't pay taxes here. Your daughter does. That's why I'm speaking on her behalf. Nobody wants to take her cause up. You know, people are doing patch-up jobs here. All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this gentleman and myself accompanying me here has asked me to wish you a very happy New Year. Thank you, and thank you for this visit that we had with him. It was quite interesting. Mrs. Collier and I took a look at your building and found it quite interesting, quite nice. If there are no other questions, then we'll continue on. Members' items, item 7.1. If you have any questions, now's the time to ask them.
Well, I'd like to, is it time now to deal with the pickleball matter? Sure, sure, certainly. If you want to, we can deal with this right now so you won't be compelled to wait until the second meeting for this thing to be decided with regard to the pickleball matter. I'm sure that your questions will be much easier to tackle than previous set of questions we had to answer. We are both citizens in Rockland and we play pickleball. I don't know if you're acquainted with that type of game. A lot of people play this type of game. It's like a mix of tennis, ping pong, backminton, if you wish, played on a field. And a lot of folks play pickleball here in Clarence and Rockland. I'd also like to thank members of Clarence and Rockland Town Council because we finally obtained four playgrounds to play pickleball throughout Clarence and Rockland. What we'd like to do is to do the same thing now within the Jean-Étienne Arena. At present, we're playing at the L'Scad because we're quite limited. We only have four fields available to us. There are 40 active members within our league. There are some people that are on our waiting list to play this game. We have to refuse the participation of many people that would be interested in taking part in this game because we don't, we can't accommodate them. If you could help us now from a rental standpoint, give us a bit of a hand, you know, help us from an equipment standpoint, maybe, so we can. So you're asking help for rental of facilities for the first six months? Well, as things stand right now, Mr. Mayor, the first three months is what we need because during the summertime, we'll be playing outside of course. It would be until the end of April where we'd need a break with regard to rental fees. We need to purchase equipment. We're making use of resources. We're making use of posts right now, but we need portable netting also. We don't want to make any holes where we're playing. Well, we'd appreciate you not making any holes on the playing ground. Basically, it cost us about $300 to draw the lines and put up the netting. Counselor Zandt? We'd already, does this fall within the confines of future plans with regards to the arena?
Well, not yet, but before getting to that point, as long as we don't charge them back rental rates, you know, for the first three months, that would be fine. So saving apart for those rental rates, you have no problems? Well, we can work hand in hand with the high school and come up with a schedule that might accommodate both because there are also some ball hockey teams that play ball hockey there. Well, I believe they play during the evenings. And if I'm not mistaken, you'd need the playing fields during the daytime. Well, my question did not target any available times, but basically, it's, my questions are directed towards those lines that are painted to accommodate the pickleball players. Now, that's quite easy to, because otherwise, we'll have other teams, you know, asking to paint lines on certain fields to accommodate field hockey players. No, we're playing there, we're playing pickleball during the daytime. We figure that during those 40 individuals, that given these 40 people that play pickleball during the daytime, we can, you know, raise that amount to 100 because people from all over, from Bushwick and Ammon, are quite interested in doing so. Also, Mr. Mayor, well, immediately after I'd read the letter that was forwarded to us, I started taking a, looking at a possibility of obtaining a grant, but being sponsored by another group. I spoke to one group and asked that group if they'd be interested in sponsoring you to obtain the necessary financing that would accommodate your needs. Well, maybe you might obtain money in this particular fashion and go through Mr. Sauvay and Mr. Boucher. And if we can purchase equipment, whether we can purchase further installations to accommodate these folks? Well, at present, we're just dealing with equipment. Now, the city would offer facilities and first three months of facility use free of charge, I find that great. Counselor Leva?
Well, the arena is not heated. Well, we went to visit the arena and there's, the interior temperature hovers in between 14 to 15 degrees Celsius. Wow, that's going to warm up. Trust me. Well, of course, you know, it warms up and then it cools off. What can I tell you? This is winter. Yes, but you know that recreational activities don't cater to the needs of only youngsters today. It's true, you know, we need to cater to the needs of those who are 55 years of age or even older. Maybe you and I can, Mr. LaLonde, can take part in this league, in this league's activities. Mr. Mayor, I've been playing in that league for the past 10 years. Now, in the United States, folks play that quite extensively, play that game, pickleball, quite extensively. Counselor Leva, do you have anything else to ask of these gentlemen? No, it's fine, Mr. Mayor. If once in agreement, moved then by Counselor Zandt, seconded by Counselor LaLonde, all those in favor? Thank you. Now, that's for free rental facility time, rental facilities time. Well, thank you very much. That was quite easy. Yes, indeed, thank you. Thank you for having attended, gentlemen. And let's go on then. It's nice to see that some customers leave with a smile on their face. All right then, that's fine, fine. Three months, no rent. Item 7.1, Counselor Guimard?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I made you all aware of a council member's item dealing with a community tournament that has been going strong for the past 10 years. I was approached by the La Victoire brothers concerning the ice rental rates. And they asked if they could have a reduced rate. They were told that they needed to go before the town council here. And we know that they generate a lot of money. They have, they generate enough financing really to supply a coach, you know. So I'd like to propose that we authorize them to obtain association rates, not, you know, have them make use of the ice rink free of charge. But whereas the annual hockey tournament has been taking place in our municipality for decades and whereas all of the profits generated by this tournament is returned to the Committee of Clarence and Rockland and surroundings in order to financially help other nonprofit associations, be it resolved that council mandates the director of these services to allocate the association ice rink to the organizers of the tournament for the duration of their event for 2018, seconded by Counselor Zandt. Any questions?
Counselor LaLonde? Entirely in agreement with the approach that we're taking here. But the only thing is that there's none of this equipment, the equipment used by the people involved in these activities that are community in nature. So I spoke to Mr. Jumaybel about this today. And what we came up with is this, as of the 1st of March, because arenas not being overused, if you want to host a tournament through a community activity or through local associations, we make use of this particular rate. We apply this rate blanketly throughout the month of March. And it would also involve CIH folks and everyone else. It would be, we'd encourage tournament organizers to make use of our facilities more often. Well, at present, it's easy to do so for the Clarence Creek Arena because we're talking about our income. But CIH, as of the 15th of March, we're talking about $200. If we allow them to have association rates for their community tournament, that means that municipality has to disburse the extra $70 per hour. So if the community tournament makes use of 80 hours, we have to come up with $2,800 to shore up this lost money because we can't ask Mr. Bordeaux to benefit one association and not benefit another one. Are we not the entity that manages the ice rinks? Yes, we have a policy. And as of the 15th of March, the policy states $200 per hour. And if we stray from that policy, then we have to shore up lost income. Well, with more activities, of course, comes a bit more revenue. Well, you see, the CIH people manage the Clarence Creek Arena, making use of the implemented policy that states $200 an hour. Even though we might enact a bylaw saying that we'll, you know, give associations or those people interested association rates to $130 per hour, we still have to shore up shortfall. Well, if Mr. La Victoire hosts a tournament in Clarence Creek? I see, I see. I'm a bit surprised in learning of this tonight, but the income goes back to us. No, it goes also back to Mr. Bordeaux to help him manage the arena through the CIH association. Counselor LaLonde?
Well, I, I might suggest that we work hand in hand with Mr. Bordeaux because as of the month of March, with regards to minor hockey leagues anyways, I've finished playing hockey. And those teams that have been eliminated don't make use of the ice rink anymore. Now, at present, during certain Saturdays and Sundays, the ice rink remains free and clear, unused for a couple of hours. Well, let me add on to this. We did so, and Mr. Bordeaux is adamant that he has to pay his full price. He stated that he has followed that particular method for many years, but the owners should not be upon the arena to assume or to pay the full cost of this particular tournament. I'm just relating to you what the operator told me and how it applies to the city of Clarence and Rockland. I am entirely in agreement that this is a wide-ranging community activity because all profits that they generate are plowed back to the community for minor hockey team or sports or support services that are offered to sports teams. The same rule applies to Clarence Creek. Teams where profits generated are plowed back into the community there also to help out children. Don't we have further policies? Yes, well, the policy states $200 per hour, Mr. Mayor. Otherwise, if we want to modify this, I need a clear directive from Town Council. It's the only method we need, we can implement with regards to CIH folks. Well, look, given a $40 million budget that we contend with year in and year out, and, you know, sometimes, you know, we might come up with money for worthy causes such as this one. We've already discussed this, as Mr. Guimard has mentioned. We talked about the impact, the positive impact that this activity has within our community. They help out the folks that are involved in fighting cancer. We're talking here about $2,700 here to host a particular event that benefits the communities. So let's just come up with $2,700 and let's just cap discussions. I believe that Mr. Boucher is in agreement with that. Well, Mr. Boucher states that he needs a director, a director from council. Mr. Boucher?
Let me add that we have two very wide, two very important tournaments that the Community Tournament and the Optimus Tournament that have been organized and set up for many years. Now, I do recognize that both of these tournaments generate a lot of benefit to the community, but we can't go about it this way, as was earlier, that was proposed earlier. Well, can we tap into some money that was set aside? Well, Mr. Mayor, this, as of the 16th of February, at this time, I can't guarantee that any hours will be left over. Well, if there's any money left over, can we not tap into that amount that's left over? Can you take a look whether or not the money does exist? Well, this year, it does, it is available, yes, this year. However, I'm going to need a long-term directive from Town Council to address this issue year in and year out. So let's take money from this amount this year. And next year, we'll allocate a bit more money within the budget to shore up monies available to those associations that organize tournaments that benefit communities. You see, normally, the rate is $230 plus GST. And we decided that as of the 15th of March, we'll apply a $200 an hour rate. If you want this rate to either increase or decrease, you have to let me know. Well, my proposal is to benefit the Minor Hockey Association by allowing them to pay $130 per hour. So you're asking me, so we're talking about 30 hours? Well, it's not a serious matter in Clarence Creek because we're the sole owners there. Well, there's still budgetary impact, Mr. Mayor, because you have to tabulate that within your income statement. So we're talking about $2,700 less. Well, if you have $5,400 left over, well, fine. Just enact a resolution to that effect. So a resolution saying that we're tapping $5,400 into reserve funds that are set aside for tournaments? In effect, let's mandate him to do so. And all he has to do now is that he might just add the Optimus Tournament, apart from that particular tournament that I've just alluded to, the other tournament, the Communities Tournament. So the resolution, Mr. Mayor, will include both tournaments? Both associations? Yes, that's right. Would you like to add a clause that would mandate that this amount be made available to those tournaments year in and year out? I believe that everyone's in agreement with this, right? Yes, I'm going to second Mr. Guimard's amendment. That's right, so they won't have to come back hat in hand next year to obtain further money. Can I ask a question here? Oh, if I can answer, of course, the question you'll ask. Well, would Mr. Boucher like to include the wording of budgetary accounts made available to council in the resolution? No, no. However, could we just, because we're opening the door, you see, here by creating this type of fund, can we just say that as of the 15th of March, we might apply this item throughout the course of the remainder of the year if other associations come forward with similar requests? Well, from 15th to the 31st of March, as Mr. LaLonde has stated, Counselor LaLonde has stated, ice rink time is available at a greater rate as of the 1st of March. Yeah, that's right. But I wouldn't like us, of course, to implement this type of agreement smack dab at the middle of August season. Well, let's just go with the 1st of March. It would give us a bigger window with regard to, you know, obtaining a bit more money, a financial window, and obtain more money? No, fine. So we're not applying this during peak rink time hours or peak rink rental hours, rink rental, rink rental interest or times? That's fine, no, we're not. So moved by Counselor Guimard and seconded by Counselor LaLonde, right? Fine, seconded by Counselor Zandt. All those in favor then? Thank you. Fine, that's it. And I'll have you all sign the resolution once it's properly drafted. Fine, Counselor LaLonde?
André? I've distributed a notice of motion at the beginning of this meeting. I don't know if everybody received this email that I initially received. I was CC'd or involved in the email. Do any of you have any questions with regards to interpretation of the email or the request that they're making? The answer they'd like to obtain is a contribution of sorts from the city of Clarence and Rockland to sponsor the All-Star game. If you'll recall, the All-Star match was held in Clarence Creek. Pierre, could you remind us of what had been done then?
Well, last year, you'd done away with ice rink rental rates completely. However, this ice rink is managed by the city of Clarence and Rockland along the same principles that have been touched upon since the beginning of discussions here. Now, the hourly association rates are $130 per hour to make use of facilities that are overseen and managed by the CIH people. Fine. I just wanted to make everyone aware of what I'd received. Fine, right? I believe that someone had attended Town Council and spoken to us about this hockey school? Yes, I don't recall exactly what the ins and outs of her project was. Well, she was asking that the minor association be allowed reduced work, reduced rates, should I say. But what they want is to obtain a contribution. What they want is contribution. They don't want to do away with the payment of fees that they are required to pay. Okay, Mr. Boucher, will there be any money left in your account after all of this is said and done? Well, Mr. Boucher is obtaining, does obtain more and more now a request from minor hockey associations that are hosting tournaments. Of course, those tournaments would be hosted outside of the prime time hours. This particular tournament will be held this coming Sunday. Well, will the people responsible of this particular league? Will the people responsible of this particular league be amenable to meet with the minor hockey league criteria set forward? I don't know. I'd be in favor of allowing a certain amount. That's why I'm asking Mr. Boucher if there was any money left in his tournament-related account. Once we've removed the $5,000 that we've already removed. Unless everybody gives money from his or her own account, shucks. We're talking about six hours' worth of rink time? $2,700, all in all. Okay, Councilor Lavigne? Well, Councilor Lallonde? They're stating that they're expecting about 1,000 spectators usually. Do people pay admission to attend this tournament? No, no. The same rule applies also with regard to the Clarence Creek tournaments. Best hockey players of our era get together and play hockey. Are there any registration fees? Well, if I rely on my memory, because I know that I worked hand-in-hand with Mr. Seattle last year in Clarence Creek, and I believe that the associations are called upon to pay a certain amount to take part in the day's activities. I see. Well, maybe $1,000? Let's not forget that they already have an association rate during prime time rink hours that are, that is offered to them. Well, we're still talking about 1,000 parents, children, also 1,000 spectators, parents and children that will be taking part in this tournament. But usually, you know, they go from, they, they go from one area to another. For the past two years, or last year and this year, this tournament has been held in Clarence in Rockland. Look, they've, they did a great job last year. Let me just add this, I received this particular email following, well, I'm not aware really of how they came up with $2,600 per hour. If they're taking up only 12 hours' worth of ice time, the amount is $1,500. I believe they tabulated it at $230 per hour. So they're, they have a right to obtain $130 per hour. So why don't we leave them at $135 an hour? They'll be quite happy with it. They'll save close to $120 per hour, per hour. You know, they never make use of all of their hours anyways, whenever they sponsor tournaments here in Rockland. Now, who's going to write up a resolution to this effect? Mr. Boucher, firstly, will you inform them that they'll obtain a $130 rate instead of the $235 rate? Yes, I would like it. Fine, next item, consent items, is there, are there any consent items that you'd like to withdraw? Yes, 8.3 sub B. I would like to remove item 8.3 sub B from the agenda for further discussion. Anything else? Fine, anything else? All right then, all right then. So let's have someone to read this. Be it resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items, during the regular meeting of Town Council on 15th of January be adopted. 8.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. A regular council meeting of December the 18th. Committee of the whole meeting of December the 18th, 2017. Item 8.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A public library board meeting of November the 21st, 2017. 8.3, the following recommendations from Committee of the whole of December the 18th. A resolution to adopt the complaint policy number A D M 2018-08. And finally, 8.4, resolution to adopt salaries paid from December 3rd, 2017 to December 30th, 2017 in the gross amount of $873,209.70 and net amount of $625,972.20. Moved by Councilor Belleguet, seconded by Councilor Lallonde. Let's go on now to item 8.3 sub B. Be it resolved that we approve two additional insurable years for the years 2019 and 2020? And be it resolved that council approved the renewal of insurance plus applicable taxes with the amount that it was arrived at, and that is stated in report. F I N 2017-49. And be it also resolved that we give directive to the Director of Finance to renew the annual insurance policy under the proviso that it conform with the limits set down by the budget. And be it resolved also that the cyber-type insurance be added on under reserve of the total budget of $300,000. Any questions? I have many questions, Mr. Mayor. Let's go on to page 25, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, I stated page 25, I should have referred to page 25, 55. If I, if I take a look at recreational provisions. I've always wondered, when we're talking about blanket coverage, in the past, Mr. Mayor, an activity conducted in the park, we had to warn the insurance people, and automatically, they were adding this activity without any cost. Is this what this particular section means? All of our activities that are sponsored, organized by the City of Clarence in Rockland are covered by our insurance. But if it's a nonprofit organization that organizes an activity in the park? No, they, all of the associations do have a type of insurance. I would like to ask if, what type of association, association organizes a given event? So to make sure that we have coverage for these particular events. Another point I'd like to raise, page 51, and page 57, should I say, states. Number one, rider number two. The following property specifically excluded from rider number one, a vacant, vacant building, former train station, 139 Burget. That means that the vacant train station is not included. I've asked that question, and I didn't obtain an answer. Well, we are insured. I don't recall the amount, but it was an amount that was established. $140,000 seems to be the amount that is, that comes to mind. But it's not reflected in the policy per se. No, I spoke of this with Alpenny, and I believe we are insured. $140,000 you're alluding to, fine. Let's go on now to page 59, because I took a look at our insurance policies here, or insurance policy here. Took a close look at it. Now, the bottom of that particular page, flooding. Does this mean that if there's an earthquake, for example, given the flooding that we were victims of, should we, would we be covered by our insurance company? Because it states that we are covered to the tune of 3% or a minimum of $100,000. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are covered, but only for municipal buildings and nothing else. Okay, I've obtained my answer. The other question I'd have would be page 63. As of July 1st, 2017, certain vehicles will no longer be considered as road-building machinery and will be considered as commercial motor vehicles, and as such, may need to be insured on your automobile policy. We now have equipment that's going to shift coverage. Well, Mr. Mayor, we received the documents that apply to all of our vehicles. They were handed, those documents were handed to our department ads, and all of our vehicles are covered. Well, it's because, you see, Mr. Boucher there, we alluded to, we talked about blanket coverage. Let's talk about the next point, hard liability automobile insurance coverage. Now, let's say that if we rent a car, or if we make use of an employee's car that gets involved in an accident, for example, and there will be no liability insurance coverage, property damage or liability caused by vehicle not owned by the insured, including. And this one is not very clear. This particular provision is not clear. Are, are employees covered on both sides if they're involved in, in an accident? Well, sometimes, one of our, our employees will make use of their guards. Our engineer might make use of his car. Would it be covered, would he be covered on both sides? Well, Mr. Mayor, this insurance deals with an individual that drives a particular vehicle. And the first thing to take a look at is take a look at their insurance provisions if they're involved in an accident or work hours, especially if it's a work-related injury. Well, thank you, and you've also answered my questions I had with regard to flooding also. I just wanted to clear matters up. All those in favor then? Carrie, thank you. Item nine. Is there something, Mr. Keogh? You're fine, fine? Committee reports, accounts paid. Councilor Zant, be it resolved that accounts paid for December 11th to 2017 to January 5th to 2018 in the amount of $7,910,992.91 be adopted as presented. Seconded by Councilor Lavigne, any questions? Councilor Lallonde? Yes, Mr. Mayor? Item number one, tax receivable. Community center, an amount of $9,554. What's that about? This is not a nonprofit entity? If this one is considered as nonprofit, are we going to consider our medical building in Rockland as being nonprofit? Well, that's it. Mr. Mayor, we can revisit this issue later. Excuse me. We, we, usually, Mr. Mayor, there's something in the Act that states that if it's a charitable or nonprofit organization, they, well, they, they have a pass, but the M P A C is the one that deals with this. Well, I remember a few years ago that part of the parking lot was not to be included. And we determined finally that the parking lot was directly attached from an assessment standpoint to the building. Mr. Keogh, we also have rental for trackless snowplow? Do we still rent out equipment to clear snow from our roadways? Well, it depends on the operations that are being conducted. We encountered some circumstances that compelled us to rent equipment to clear snow away. But we're not talking about long-term rental agreements here. When we're talking about trackless equipment, yeah, it's dealing with the sidewalk clearing. So let's say if we have equipment that breaks down during the course of a snowstorm, that we will enter into a short-term rental agreement? Yes, that's right, to rent equipment that we lack. There's an item that says Hydro 12221, Hydro, Lallonde Street. Are we the ones paying for the reconnection with regards to Hydro 1? That's on credit cards, that's right. Page 97, oh, Mr. Mayor? This relates to the landfill site. May changes with regard to the scale or the equipment there. I see. The same rule applies to Catherine Street? Catherine Street? I remember that Hydro was also involved in this, in the Catherine Street facilities. 2335 Lallonde Street, yes, 2335 Lallonde. That alludes to the landfill site. That's on Lallonde Street? Yes, in Burget. Oh, all right, that's quite different. And the other one is, applies to Catherine Street in Rockland. The one located, the one with regard to Catherine, that's the real, it's a post that was relocated. That was part, that parcel of the work that was supposed to be done a while back. The realignment work included Catherine. There was a post that was supposed to be moved from one area to another. It was included in the agreement, the developer was involved in all of this. I see. All those in favor then? Carrie, let's go on now to item 9.2, ratification of accounts, Councilor Lavigne. Be it resolved that a total of $25,044 as reflected in Appendix A 2018-02 with regards to bad debts, so that this amount be written off. Councilor Belleguet, any questions? Those are things that we cannot recoup? Well, they've been referred to collection agency for the past two years, and at this point in time, there's, we have a hard time to recoup, recovering accounts. These are for, this relates to unpaid accounts, that's right. Especially those that have commercial spaces that remain without any tenants, basically. They're not rented, that's right. So what kind of account? Well, it could be with regard to invoice that remains unpaid with regard to inspection that was carried, or it could be also a variety of other things, dog medallions. Well, no, no, dog medallions need to be paid out on a different schedule. But it also applies to daycare services that are offered and remain unpaid. I believe that if there has been no payment after the three months, the town will not offer any daycare services to child anymore, to the parents. Councilor Zant? Well, we don't have the right to sue anyone after a two-year period. Is that a limit that is imposed upon us by the provincial government or by the federal government? I believe it's a provincial matter. Mr. Mayor? I take a look at the list of, including Appendix 1, and we have the name as well as the amount owed. And next time around, we'll put in the rationale for the expense that has been incurred and not, and remain, remaining unpaid. Well, I'm in agreement with what you're stating. I'm okay with the explanations. With regard to the accounts receivable wiped off, that's fine. We don't need you revisit that. No, but the next one up, though, that would be fine. All those in favor then? Thank you. I believe there had, there was a question. I simply mentioned that the report states that after two years, we cannot continue requesting payment, but there's a note that is attached with the credit office with regard to a particular file. So it could be then that we, it might impact the person's credit standing. Let's go on now, 2018 development charges that are indexed, yes? Item 9.3. Be it resolved that council adopt a bylaw to establish connection fees and garbage collection fees? No, you're, you're not reading the right bylaw here. If I may be allowed to read, okay. Whereas...
Okay, whereas, section 10. A law of 2015-13 stipulates that development charges that have been implemented can be adjusted on an annual basis. Be resolved that council approve that rates with regards to development charges be increased by some 2.2% effective as of the 1st of January 2017, 2018, should I say, to reflect increases in development charges for residential purposes and non-residential purposes. Such charges reflected in Appendix A and B. Well, Mr. Mayor, I have a question to Mrs. Collier with regard to this, because we're proposing a 2.2% adjustment. I find personally that we're revisiting this issue year after year to contemplate an increase. And this, the bylaw allows us to do so. But the 2.2% retroactive to the 1st of January 2018, I find that quite a steep increase. From what I can read of the contents of those reports that are forwarded to us, the department is doing quite well. We're talking about $400,000 for a residential building. And contractor that's involved also faces a sizable increase. Are we going to revisit this issue each and every year to reflect the increases in the index? I understand. But I'm concerned by the disadvantages that we have to live under here in Rockland. And we like to draw youngsters more and more, now young families, to get to set up in Rockland. You say that you need an increase of some 2.8%, but have other municipalities also increased their rates in previous years. If we don't follow along with a given trend, we can say, well, it's justified or not. I propose that we take a close look at 2.8%. Or should we have a, contemplate a lower rate? Is your view on this? Well, I'd like to certainly hear other comments. And I'd like to be at bar with other municipalities. Councillor Zandt?
I'm completely in agreement with Councillor Guimaraes here, Mr. Mayor. But you see, it's important to take this into account, to understand exactly why this is happening. It's not exactly an issue for me. I think that if we can get a few percent and say that it's going to be this much long-term, I have a better understanding of that. That kind of like what you were saying, coming back year after year and say, well, this year is going to be 2.8, maybe next year is going to be something else. Because it has to be, it has to be a rate that is fair to everybody, obviously. But also, understanding what the costs are going to be long-term, when these funds are going to have to be used for whatever they're going to have to be used for. So I'm okay with this, because I would like to have a comparison with other municipalities. And I think that every time we talk about municipal development charges, we should have as much information about everybody else in Prescott-Russell, including Ottawa, just to make sure we come up with a proper decision. Because this has a huge impact on future development. So I would be in favor of deferring this issue until we get more information. Councillor Lallon?
Schedule B. What year was that Schedule B? That's page 311. Page 311, Schedule B. Because there's no year on, that's printed on top of that. If I take a look at Schedule B, 2017, shows an increase of 1%. Was it per year? Was it for two years, three years? Mr. Mayor? The appendix reflects this. It's in the report. Well, I have the appendix before me, in front of me, right here. You see? It deals with 311 figure. Is that for residential? Councillor Lallon? Let's go on to the next one then. 218, right now? As Councillor, Councillor. My fellow councillor has stated, we're talking about justifiable charges. You're talking about Appendix 3 here. Yes, Appendix 3, thank you. Yes, with a 2.8, it's $138.89 increase. Now, if we were to look at 2%, it would be an increase of $99.20. Same thing for single and semi-detached. Actual for 2018, same, $411.46 increase with a 2.8. If it was 2% increase, it would be 293.90. And then road and other rural and other multiple, the proposal is 277.79. If it was 2, it would be 198.42. And the last one, apartment. The increase showing the proposal is 243.01 per unit. And if we were at 2%, it would be 178.388, or 58, I'm sorry. So to me, I would highly recommend that we go to 2%. Fine? Any other questions? We have two members that wish to have this deferred. So is everyone in favor of having this deferred? So we'll defer this issue and bring us back comparisons so we can make a comparison. And maybe a 10-year projection if it's possible for the next meeting? I know that we have to do it again in 20, well, the index or the charge applies to, well, I know that we have to correct this every five years. Yes, it has to be done every five years. So where does that take us, ma'am? 2015, yes, 2015. So 2020, we have to review this again? Yes, but we have to start the process as of the next one. The next one will be 2019. So we'll, that'll give us more information also. Mr. Mayor? When they come to us with this, I'd like to know what their intention on a long-term basis. You know, if we're talking about 2.8, it's applicable for the next three years, then that's, it changes. You understand what I'm getting at, Mrs. Collier? I just like, I have a small explanation to say this. The construction index, which is the index that is presented here and the one that is prescribed under the legislation and the one that's used across the province, they choose a construction index because that is a better reflection of the work that the municipality is doing. So we're collecting the money, you know, to put sewers in place. And that's why they use that particular index. So we can go and look at what other municipalities are doing, keeping in mind that it's not, well, it's all throughout, well, Russell, who else collects here? LaRussel, La Nation, and also the other ones also. Well, do they all, you know, if we had checks and balances, it would give us a better idea. Fine, we will do that, fine. Councillor, Mr. Keogh, Mr. Mayor? We also have to recognize that we revisit our operating capital budget every year. That's why the accounts have a full look every year at the tax rate and the development charges. Because it's a five-year period, that's why the legislation, well, simply it's to keep up with inflation. That's all it is. So if council is to defer it, then we are essentially deferring our building to pay for some of the projects. It's simply cashing up with inflation. So it's not revisiting the charge. It is simply inflation protection that the province allows municipalities to do. So what you're saying, sir, pardon me, you're saying that even if we defer, you still want to stick with the 220? Essentially, that's what you're saying, 2.20? Well, I'm recommending that council every year, every year, increase their development charges that they've approved by the construction price index. That's the only way that they're going to ensure that their rate keeps up with inflation. Otherwise, if council defers it or does not go ahead with it, you're not going to be able to finance the same amount of projects that you envisioned when you set the rate. So whether we defer it tonight or not, it doesn't change anything. The fact of the matter is that all of the other municipalities are probably following the same index. Is that what you're saying? Well, council can still decide not to increase the rate or not to increase it as much, you know. Sorry. If we decide, let's say hypothetically, that we go down to 2%, are you guys going to provide us with a list of projects that will be affected from 2.8 to 2.0? How do we know if we're going to take a decision? If you say that anything less than 2.8 is going to impact projects, well, look, I can say unequivocally, Mr. Mayor, that if you go with the lesser rate, it's going to impact your rate that's going to be created in 2020 because it's going to have to pick up any of the deficit. So in 2020, when we revisit the charge, if we reduce our increase each and every year, it's going to be affected with a new rate we're going to establish in 2020. Either way, you're going to pay. So 2.8, was that already discussed in the budget? No. Well, during the budget, we were taking a look at those rates. Well, we'd mentioned that in the past, we'd indexed the rates. But I'm not sure before my time if we did it every year or not. But if we did it every year, well, there were a couple of years where the construction rate was negative. And council decided to leave the rate the same. Because we didn't index in 2016. We did it for the first time in 2017. Councillor Belleguet?
Well, I thought that we had taken into account some variables at a certain point in time. Other municipalities also adopt indexing around that same amount, you know, given variables that come into play. But I thought that the purpose for deferring was taking a look at what other municipalities were doing. But he seems to be saying that we're just going to keep up with things that are going to be brought forward down the road. That's what municipalities are relying on. But I see. In any event, you know, if we wish to defer, we might come back with further information to support a decision to hold on to this principle. My point is that every other municipality is indexing, using the same index rate. What's the point in waiting? Well, we might come back in September with a different point of view. The impact with regard to building permits. We're issuing a building permit every five minutes right now, really, you know. So I believe that we can do so. Councillor Lallon?
One question. In keeping with what you're telling us, construction index, we go in keeping with the construction index. But is that what we did in previous years to come up with a 1% increase? I was told that probably as of 2015, the one that we have on Schedule B was implemented, was implemented 2015. Because the first statement that we have doesn't have any date on this. Well, we could not backtrack, Mr. Mayor. We had to work back from the year 2017. So once you miss it, it can't go back. Well, what year was this one done, you know? It was done in 2017. But there's another chart in there that shows how much increase we incurred in 2017 was 1%. Yes, but before that, there was none, Councillor Lallon. I see. So we didn't follow the construction index. Well, sometimes we're faced with a negative construction index. Sometimes staff do not come up with reports. They should have maybe in this instance, but they did not. All those in favor then? Fine. Let's go on now to bylaws. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted? By the way, is there a bylaw that you'd like to withdraw? Item 10.5? Mr. Mayor? Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted? 10.1. 2017-162 Men zoning bylaw, 2016-10, Part of Law 13, Concession 101, Part 3, On Plan 50R-3108, 10.2. Bylaw 2018-01, to provide a schedule of retention periods for the records of the city. 2018-02. To establish new fees for the collection and disposal of garbage and recycling for 2018. 10.4. Bylaw 2018-04, to provide for interim tax levies for the year 2018. Seconded by Councillor Zandt. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Let's go on now to item 10.5. Councillor Lallon?
The only point of contention I have with item 2018-05, whereas the City of Clarton-Rockland intends to sign an agreement with the Ministry of Transportation for the allocation to the municipality of a portion of the provincial gas tax, whereas section 8, 9, and 11 of the Municipal Act 2001, 2001, Chapter 25, and amendments thereto provides that every municipal corporation may pass a bylaw for the purpose of combining its affairs as it considers appropriate. So, Mr. Mayor, the question I had with regard to this is this one. And Mr. Boucher can answer me as to this. At present, do we report back to the ministry the cleanup work on parking areas? Now, we have a new parking lot facility in Channing. Even though we're not the one performing the work, we can send them an invoice. Yes, you raised the same item last year. And everything that's, that deals with public transit services within the criteria that we're allowed to work with, we just send an invoice, as is the case this. Because we're compelled to clean up parking lot facilities in the morning because people need to clean parking lot to park their cars, to take the bus. And 100% of those cleanup costs can, no? Because it makes, it's multi-purpose. But it's, this parking lot facility is cleaned up early in the morning to allow potential passengers to park their cars there. And the same rule applies to Rockland Arena, to the Rockland Arena. There are only three or four individuals that park there because we clean up this parking lot, because it's a parking lot facility. There are one, two, three, four, five, six. If I add on the Channing facilities, Mr. Campou, I'd asked us to clean up this area to accommodate those who take our public transit services. I don't want to be a contrarian here, Councillor Lallon. Last year, you raised the same point. And we followed up with the ministry to determine what was applicable. Those were the directives they handed to us at that time. If you want us to perform the research together, to do the research together, we can do so. All those in favor then? Carrie? I'm sorry. Is this a new phenomenon? No. This comes back each and every year. We have to sign an agreement to receive federal gas tax money to fund public transit services. So we receive a bracket of $245,000 per year. So in fact, does this, is that part of the grant money that is applicable to buses? Yes, in part, it does, yes. But there's a further amount that's applicable for cleaning up. Federal applies to public transit. Fine, all those in favor? Carrie, Carrie then. All right then? Very good. Moved by Councillor Lallon or seconded by Councillor Lallon? Do you want to enter into a closed meeting now or later?
I'd like to get involved, I'd like to get into the closed meeting matters immediately, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. During the time in which my, that time in which my brain is still functioning, it's pretty good. We're still at 9 o'clock, so. I'm quite alert. Let's tackle those closed meeting sessions. Fine. Councillor Guimaraes? Yes? Other, well, be it resolved that the regular meeting of Town Council be adjourned so that we might hold a closed meeting to discuss the following subjects as outlined in section 239 of the Municipalities Act 2001. 5.1. Minutes of the closed meeting of the 20th of November, 2011. 5.3. Human resources matter. Dave Darge, negotiation. 5.4. Negotiations with volunteer firefighters for a new collective agreement. And 5.5, proposed sale of a property in the industrial park. As well, 11.2, hiring of a manager for community relations. Seconded by Councillor Levalle. So let's go to a closed meeting then, shall we?